We'll start by transmitting of Treasury Warrants nineteen, nineteen A, twenty, twenty A, twenty-one, and twenty-one A.
Motion so moved.
Second?
Motion made in second, all in favor. It's unanimous. We have the minutes from the October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven meeting to approve.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second?
Motion made in second, all in favor. It's unanimous. We'll start with our seven o'clock appointment. It's Frank and Karen West, and they're here to talk about the Toys for Tots program. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you like to introduce the First Sergeant that's with you?
I was gonna say, first and foremost, if you'd like to sit. First and foremost, this is not Karen West. This is First Sergeant Nukem from the United States Marine Corps.
Good evening, First Sergeant. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And basically, we just wanted to talk real brief about the Marine Corps Toys for Tots program, and, you know, a couple of things, how it impacts the town of Wilmington here, and also how to get, you know, not only have people donate toys, but also how we can get our local residents receive toys. Our friends, family, neighbors that, you know, that they know that deserve toys, that, you know, that, you know, could receive them. Basically, Sergeant Nukem, I'd like Sergeant Nukem, if she would, if she could just explain a little bit about how the program works, and then I'll tell you about a couple of things that are going on here in Wilmington.
Excellent.
We cover all of Essex County, part of Middlesex County as well. Last year, our campaign, we took care of sixty-eight thousand families. So, we do quite a bit. So, we are very dependent on the kindness of those who give. I think our demand is gonna be greater this year. I think we're all pretty aware that the economy's not as great as it has been in the past. So, I think our demand is gonna be higher this year. So, it's very imperative that people that can afford to give, give, so that some child can have a toy, because there are children out there that will not have a toy at all at Christmas without Toys for Tots. Just because a child or a family is not eligible for assistance and other means does not mean that they're not eligible for Toys for Tots. If they come to us and they say they have a need, then we're gonna do our very best to take care of them. So, there is no financial requirement, no cutoff, so to speak, for eligibility. If they tell us that they need assistance, we will do our best to take care of them and make sure they get the assistance they need. If they are signed up with an agency and they are receiving assistance, then that's pretty cut and dry, and the agencies will request for them, and we supply toys to the agencies, and the agencies distribute to them.
Where is the drop-off point this year for? Is it by the Stonemem Zoo there? Is it store there?
We have several. We have eighty-eight towns or so. Here in Wilmington, he can tell you where the drop-offs are specifically.
I'm sorry, the pickup. I meant the pickup to go.
We have several different distribution sites, so we're actually still setting that up right now. Depending on what the agencies can do for us, how much they can distribute, determines how many other additional sites we have to set up. So, we're still working with the agencies right now to see what they can handle.
Thank you.
You know, basically, Lou, is that the program is a volunteer-run organization, you know, obviously through the Marine Corps, but there's a lot of civilian volunteers. And as far as, you know, local distribution points to drop off toys, I mean, certainly right outside the door here at Town Hall, Market Basket in both Wilmington and Tuxbury, there's actually seventy, we've right now got seventy-five distribution, uh, drop sites between Wilmington and Tuxbury. That's what we have today, and there's more coming. So, basically, if somebody wants to, you know, drop off a toy, certainly there's, like, if they go, like I said, to Market Baskets, there's Redding Cooperative Bank, a lot of the local businesses, you'll see the, you know, Toys for Tots collection boxes. As far as, again, as First Sergeant was saying, as far as if somebody was to need toys, there's a website, it's, you know, toysfor tots.org, and what they would do is they would go into, you know, Mass, was it Middlesex County?
Middlesex or Essex will take them, either one will take them to our site.
You know, and, you know, there's a fill-in, you know, a spot to fill in for what they're looking for. You know, one local event that we're doing, you know, at our office, which is West Rail Estate, is that for the fifteenth year, we're having Santa Claus. And basically, for the donation of a toy or a check, you know, kids can get their pictures taken with Santa Claus, and I've also got Blades, who is the Bruins mascot, coming, as well as the Bruins Ice Girls will be there as well. So, we're hoping that that generates some donations from the toys. But what I've been, if I, if you would make, there's just some flyers that you can certainly have. But the thing that I'm trying to stress also is, is that our local community here in Wilmington is donating these toys, and Tuxbury as well, from my standpoint. And what I'd like to be able to do, and one of the reasons why, you know, I asked, you know, whoever's the coordinator of the program this year, First Sergeant Nukem, is just to tell people that, you know, hey, look, you know, Wilmington people are donating these toys, well, there's a lot of Wilmington people that want, you know, could receive these toys as well. And there's, you know, there's other programs out there, Salvation Army and things like that, but, you know, I just want to kind of cover this base, so that if we can have people in our own community, you know, have a good Christmas and a good holiday season, you know, we'd like to be able to do that. So, you know, wanna thank the town manager for, once again, allowing the toy box here at Town Hall. Like I said, there's, you know, some of the schools have toy boxes, the senior center, and, you know, certainly if anybody has any questions about the program, on each box is my home number. So, if anybody wants to give Karen a call, we'll be happy to direct them. From my standpoint, it's an anonymous program, so, you know, I don't know who the recipients are, I don't get involved in that end, and I, quite frankly, I don't want to. I just, I like the anonymity of it, excuse me. But I don't know if the board members or anyone has any quick questions on that, and we'll let you go back to important business.
No, this is very important. Is there a specific age that you're usually short of gifts on, like, maybe the younger or the older?
Last year, we really struggled with the nine-plus. Nine-to-fourteen age group, we really struggled with keeping up with it. As kids have gotten older, you know, they want things like MP3 players and things like that, and those are not things that people normally buy and donate. Most people, when they hear Toys for Tots, they think small children, they think, our three-to-five, we never have a problem with, we always have plenty of toys for three-to-five. But last year, we really struggled with the nine-plus. One question that's very common is, do the toys that we collect go to other areas, or the money that we collect go to other areas? And that is not the case at all. Any monies or toys that are collected in our campaign area goes back to our campaign area. So, anything that's collected in Wilmington may help someone in Wilmington, or may help someone in Tuxbury, it may help someone in, I don't know, Lowell. But all the toys and the monies that are collected stay within our area.
Very good. And I know I've used, through Frank before, with some children while Dad was serving overseas, so that worked out kind of nice. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I know that you come in every year, this is an annual presentation, and I think at this point, folks are familiar with the program, at least, you know, enough to, hopefully to be able to make a donation, but I think it's helpful nonetheless for you folks to come in and remind people that you're still out there doing what you've done for a long time, and I'm sure the community as a whole appreciates it. Thank you.
Would also Sergeant Nukem would like to present a certificate to the chairman.
Sir, the town of Wilmington in support of Toys for Tots. We're not rich playing needs, it's what we got, so.
Thank you very much.
There you go. The town of Wilmington for your support, we really, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Again, lastly, like I said, our event's gonna be Sunday, December eleventh, from twelve to four at our office, but that's only one of many events that many of the volunteers in the Toys for Tots program are putting on. So, like I said, you know, on one end, you know, thank you again to the community for the, you know, generous donations and how generous our community has been in the past years, and hopefully will continue to be. And like I say, on the other end, if there are people that are in need of toys, it's a great program, it's a great way to get some toys, and hopefully lighten the load, you know, make a little bit nicer for Christmas, and like you were saying, Mr. Smaglia, that especially some of our servicemen and women that are overseas that, you know, could use a little assistance on that end, too. You know, it's a really, really good program.
It is. And it's toysfor tots.org.
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you all very much, and happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Okay, our seven-ten appointment was Diana DeGgerio, President of the Wilmington Community Fund, for presentation of funds to the Wilmington Fire Department. Good evening.
Good evening.
You can, you wanna sit? Do you wanna talk?
The Wilmington Community Fund would like to give you some funds to help toward the ten thousand dollars that is definitely mutual, to help towards the Lucas Compression System.
Quite thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
We had done a Jaws of Life for the fire department a couple of years ago, and we try to keep safety in check while we're thinking about things that we can do for the community fund. We had carbon monoxide drive a couple of years ago for other Wilmington residents in town, and we just purchased all the AED systems for all the schools last year. So, we're hoping that this will help.
This is great. Yeah, to be able to piggyback on top of the Liberty Mutual money that we got just last week, this will take care of us right where we need to be.
Great.
Thank you. First picture together.
First grade.
I have something to say, but I.
No, don't say it.
He must have stayed back, Chief.
She looks a lot younger than you.
Every time the chief comes, he gets a check.
Away from the eagle.
Oh, this way. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Now, our seven-fifteen, right on time, is with Humphrey Skip Moynihan, he's the Principal Assessor, Public Hearing for Discussion of Local Property Tax Policy with Reference to Classification. Good evening, Mr. Moynihan.
Good evening.
This will now open the public hearing.
I always follow all this goodwill. You're like the Grinch. The Board of Assessors has recently completed work on our valuation file for fiscal year two thousand and twelve. I'd like to go over those numbers with you, and then I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have. You'll note that from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve, we added about nine point three million dollars onto the residential sector. That was primarily the fact that we built thirty new homes in Wilmington this past year. We're seeing some mixed messages, though, with the economy. If you'll notice, in the commercial and industrial sector, we're starting to see a little bit of erosion with some of our commercial and industrial properties. But again, another mixed message, if you look at the personal property, we had a considerable bump, almost seven million dollars in personal property, which is equipment and inventory of businesses. So, overall, the net result was that the town now is five million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars greater than it was last year. Our town value today stands at three billion, five hundred and thirty million, eighty-five thousand, seventeen. So, we're here tonight to make a recommendation on the tax rate. We have settled on a levy of fifty-seven million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Again, the town value, three point five billion. When we divide the town value into the levy, we come up with a straight rate of sixteen dollars and thirty-six cents per thousand. Wilmington is a classified community, meaning that we shift considerable volume of tax burden to the commercial, industrial, and personal property sectors. And this year, we're going to the maximum amount, as we have in the past few years. This will result in a commercial and industrial tax rate of twenty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. And when we take the reciprocal of this one point seven-five factor, we come up with a minimum residential factor of point seven-four-two-zero-one-three, and that will result in a residential tax rate of twelve dollars and fourteen cents per thousand. I just wanna point out to you, you can see that over the past few years, the residential value has held pretty steadily at seventy-four, seventy-five percent. CIP value, again, twenty-five, twenty-six percent. But you'll note that the tax levy share of the residential sector is fifty-five percent, and the commercial, industrial, and personal property is forty-five percent. So, even though the CIP value is only twenty-six percent, they bear forty-five percent of the tax burden for the town. Once again, just looking at the tax levy amounts from last year to this year, you can see that last year's tax levy was fifty-six million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. This year, it's fifty-seven million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand. We're up by about one million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand. The share of the levies have remained pretty constant, so we're not seeing any dramatic shifts in that area. One of the ingredients that we use to come up with the tax levy is a factor for two-and-a-half percent of last year's levy limit and a factor for new growth. And if you can see, we've had a little fall off this year in the new growth. It's usually been a little over a million dollars, and this year, it's just tapered down a bit. But we're still, you know, our ten-year average of growth is still over a million dollars a year. And then lastly, these represent the tax dollar increases over the past few years. You can see, this year, the total increase is actually considerably less than it has been in the past few years. So, what we are recommending today is to set the tax rate at the numbers I just gave, by going to a maximum shift to the commercial, industrial, and personal property sectors. This results in the most favorable tax scenario for residential property owners. We're recommending a tax levy of fifty-seven million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. So, that's the tail of the tape. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I'd just make a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Skip, I appreciate you being here, and once again, I appreciate your honesty and your professionalism. And I know, being a selectman, we get calls from time to time, people talking about their tax bill, and I've always suggested to them, if they wanna do an abatement, they come down to the town assessor, and you've always treated them with respect. And once again, I will support the recommendation of the Board of Assessors. Simply put, obviously, we have several hats, one of them being a business owner, owning a restaurant, and obviously, the maximum tax shift, which I have no problem with. I've always voted in the past to give the residents the best tax rate, the best bang for their buck. And I believe the last time we had the maximum tax shift, two thousand and four in that area, I believe, and I know, I served on the board at that time, also supported the maximum tax shift at that time. And people need to realize, back then, as they do now, they'd be probably paying another thousand dollars a year today compared to what they would've been paying back then. So, when we do this, people need to realize that we're actually putting the more tax burden on the commercial base, and we're fortunate, forty-five cents of every dollar, as you stated, is picked up by commercial business.
Right.
And I know there are other people in that own commercial rail state as well. But I do support it, and I appreciate the time, Mr. Chairman. I think the town has, have been accustomed to the service they receive, and, you know, we do very well, the manager does a good job with his team managing the budget, you do a great job here at the Town Hall, and I feel very comfortable, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, and as a resident, and as a parent in this community, that we get a lot of services, and it's really proud to say I live in this town. And I'm not, believe me, I'm not a free election, I don't have an election going on. I love this community, and I think we're doing very well here, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Skip. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ollis? Sure. I wonder if I could look at the average single-family bill for FY two thousand and And I wonder if you could, and I'm asking this question, hopefully for the benefit of some folks who might have this question, that might be watching at home. Can you please explain how the town, in the tax bill that comes out for the first and second quarters, being this past November first and August first payments? How by definition, they are preliminary in estimates? How you come up with that estimate? And then, given your increase over last year for the, I'll call it the average Wilmington home? How that plays into the tax bill coming for the third and fourth quarters after the rate is set?
Sure. The first two bills, we're on a quarterly system, so the first two bills are estimated tax bills. We are allowed by law to increase those bills by two-and-a-half percent, 'cause there's an assumption that you're at least gonna increase taxes by that amount. So, when we say, for example, this year, that the average homeowner will see about a hundred and one dollar increase, it's probably already been built in. So, the first two bills, the average person is not gonna see a dramatic difference in the last two bills that they're receiving.
Okay. So, in other words, when you do the estimates based on the two-and-a-half, as an estimate, you divide it over the four quarters, and you try and?
We add two-and-a-half percent to the prior year's assessment and tax.
And divide it by the four quarters?
That's right.
That's my, okay.
Yes.
All right, yeah. And the reason why I ask that question is to reinforce, in my own mind, and for folks who might be watching, a point that Mr. McCoy made, and that's that, you know, from the town's perspective, we shift the tax burden as much as we can on the CIP taxpayers. And, you know, I think for anybody to come in here and to, you know, not to acknowledge that taxes over time are going to go up is disingenuous. But I think that the town has done a pretty darn good job in maintaining, you know, and limiting the burden that we put on the residential taxpayers. So, I think that how that bears out in the quarterly payments and what people might expect in the third and fourth quarter, which is, on average, not a substantially higher bill than they just got, I think is helpful for people to understand.
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
That's it for now.
There we go. Thank you. Any comments over there?
Yeah, I have a question. It's really about the mathematics of it. It's clearly, it makes a lot of sense, and we, as a community, through the administrators here at Town Hall and around the various departments, do a very good job, in my opinion, of getting a lot of bang for our collective tax buck. So, I guess lots of compliments to a lot of folks in that regard. You talked about two-and-a-half and growth, and I'm always a little bit shaky on how this mathematics works. So, if I looked at the tax levy in eleven, and it was fifty-six and a half million, and in fiscal twelve, we're looking at fifty-seven million, seven hundred and something thousand dollars. So, should I be able to look at last year's tax levy and this year's tax levy and somehow be able to discern that there's two-and-a-half percent? Where does two-and-a-half fit there?
This is an unusual year, only because we retired our debt in two thousand and eleven, all right?
Okay.
So, what you're looking at is the net levy amount of last year, less that override, that debt exclusion override, times two-and-a-half percent.
I see.
And then, in addition to that, through a formula that we use, we come up with a new growth value. And for example, this year, a lot of that eight-hundred and forty-two thousand came from the personal property sector, almost five, a little over five hundred thousand came from the personal property sector.
So, the actual increase that the individual, and this might be related to what Mr. Nouse just said, so pardon me if I'm rephrasing the same question. The actual increase that a resident would feel, let's pretend for a moment we're not doing the classification shift, let's just say generally across the board. They would not feel a full two-and-a-half bump, it's amortized across the entire population or the entire levy, correct?
Yes, that's right.
All right. Then we apply the shift, so people will feel it at different ratios, dependent on where they are in that scheme.
Exactly.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
So, Tom?
So, from a residential standpoint, based on the previous eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents, it's basically they're gonna pay twenty-six cents per thousand more, from a residential standpoint?
Yes, yeah. So, their total tax bill, on average, if they have the average value home of three-hundred and fifty-seven thousand, it's gonna go up about a hundred and one dollars.
Right. I'll tell you, from, you know, from my personal and professional experience, our tax rates are still much lower than, you know, other communities, you know, so certainly taxes do go up, the cost of living does go up, but I think, to everyone's point, you certainly do an excellent job as a town in managing the budget to try and keep it as minimal as possible. So, I certainly do appreciate that.
If I, one more thing. As properties have stayed the same, I think you mentioned that in maybe the introduction letter. So, our property values are holding, it seems, at least for the time being.
Yes.
So, that actually helps us. If property values had decreased, then we would have to make up for that decrease potentially somehow through additional taxation. Am I wrong or right about that, or?
Right. Since, in two thousand and ten and two thousand and nine, we dropped residential property values six percent each of those years, all right? So, what happens, the dynamic of the shifting is, if the residential sector loses value and the commercial and industrial sector does not, they are picking up a greater share of the burden. So, the good news is that over the past couple of years, our residential sector has stabilized, so we haven't had to reduce the values. You know, we analyze the sales of properties, and we have not had to reduce the values in the residential sector. And in addition to that, last year, we built twenty-eight new homes. This year, we've built thirty new homes. So, I think that that's a good sign.
Sure, sure.
You know, Realtors tell me in town that there isn't that much inventory.
There isn't.
And to Ms. Ollis' point a moment ago, talking about comparable tax rates are really the amount of money that individuals pay in various communities, you did us a service in helping us get a sense of what other communities are paying, similar, communities similar to us, as well as proximal. So, looking at Chelmsford, Tinsborough, Westford, all of whom will expect to pay substantially more in fiscal year twelve than what we're gonna be paying. So, I think that's also a compliment to the operations of the town. I'm a big fan of looking for any opportunity or to minimize taxation, but when, from my standpoint, when we talk about it at the local scale, we're the folks that are paving the roads and plowing the roads and putting people to school, and this is where the rubber hits the road. So, really, finding ways to do the most you can with all of these dollars is imperative, and I think we're all doing a great job. So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
I agree. To continue what you just said, if you break it down, twenty-five dollars a quarter, but you're also, you're not paying for any fees, for any busing, for any school, for any, any fees in town, trash fees, surrounding towns, they pay for everything. And I think that's a key thing to remember here, that we don't have any fees for anything.
Exactly. Yep.
There's no hidden tax.
No hidden tax, that's right. That's right. Any questions or comments from the audience? Mr. Legasol?
Yeah, Joe Legasol, Golden Conference Street. I have a question, and maybe you can answer that. Whereas, my understanding, as of last meeting, our free cash were in a two-and-a-half million dollars, was there ever, in one year, was there ever any consideration to not increasing tax by the maximum two-and-a-half percent? Or do we always just automatically do that? I've noticed over the last ten years, my property taxes actually increased five to eight percent, to the exception of like last year. So, it's kind of block, block magic to me, how the two-and-a-half comes in, and I see a five-and-a-half to eight percent increase most years. But my question is, is there ever any consideration for a less than a two-and-a-half percent increase when there was such an increase in free cash for one year?
I'll take that. So, you know, in most communities today, you know, they're almost all taxing to the max, right? You know, we're fortunate in that we've got a good free cash position, but, you know, you don't necessarily wanna squander that opportunity by not taxing to the max every year. Proposition two-and-a-half is a tax-limiting measure, it's a tax cap, all right? So, it was designed to keep. So, it was designed to keep taxes at a bare minimum. So, there's some, you know, it's a little illogical, if you've got a tax-limiting measure in place, to not at least go up to that tax-limiting measure.
Well, I just raised a question for people to think about. I just, you know, point out that there are a lot of people that, you know, two-family incomes, pay for mortgages, a lot of times the one income is lost to a layoff or downsizing or reduced to part-time, and all the expenses are going up generally, you know, heating, oil, electricity, food, and eventually, this kind of pyramid is going to hit the wall, where it's going to be, you know, you're going to like pay the value of your house every year. It's not approaching that point yet, but I just raised the question. Thank you for the answer.
And, you know, taxes are real money these days, and they're real money in every community. So, I'm not disputing that, you know?
One comment I would make is that we do look at that. We, I would echo what Skip just said, though, in terms of the taxing capacity. The taxes this year are going up around 2%. That's what we're, that's what you should see on your tax bill, somewhere around 2%, 2.2%. And I think that unless somebody has done something dramatically different to their home, that's really what they're going to, what they're going to see this year.
I can't speak to that. I do know last year, my increase was something, or less than 2%. But prior to that, I did, because I had some issues going on last year, I went back 10 years, and I noticed that my personal property taxes had gone up between, like about 4.8 and 8.7 each year. I actually came to a Selectman meeting about two years ago, Mr. Newhouse responded to my question, where between the estimated tax rate and the first finalized tax rate, I saw an increase of that quarter, 15% tax rate, and then from the second estimated tax payment until the final, it was a 28% increase, based on the formulation. So, when you say that they're almost the same, that may very well be, but in that particular instance, when I came in and expressed a little frustration, it was a 15 and a 28% change, which kind of shocked me.
Yeah, that seems awful.
I can bring the paperwork into your office and show you that to you.
Yeah, please do.
That kind of situation, and why I offered an abatement last year.
Yeah, I wish you would, Dr. Harvick.
All right.
But, yeah.
Thank you.
And like what McCoy said, there are abatements out there for seniors, disabled veterans, so it doesn't hurt to call the assessor's office and ask, "Skip."
Any other questions, comments? Mr. McDonald?
Yeah. I actually have some documentation here, Mr. Moynihan. In fairness, can I bring it over to his table and show it to him?
Mr. McDonald, just showing the documents, please.
All right. This one here, it says, "Due to an increase in the tax rate, the average home could see an increase of approximately $101 in the tax bill." That's your document, right? And we've been told that if this debt exclusion passes for the new high school, it'd be another $164 for the average homeowner. So, it's pushing up to that, people are going to have an increase of about $300, close to that.
Can I interrupt? Before misinformation goes on.
Excuse me for one second. Mr. McDonald, can you go back to your seat? You can explain your paperwork there. There's no reason to go over there with him. I prefer you just sit back at your seat, please, Mr. McDonald.
Are you able to read these names here?
Mr. McDonald, please. I've asked nicely. I've asked you nicely, just give them. You know what? Yeah, leave the paperwork there. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I just wanted to say, we're talking about fiscal year 2012, and what we said is correct. As anybody who has attended any of the meetings know, that the earliest that we would do any increase with regard to the high school project would be in fiscal year 2013. So, people should not get the impression that the cost of the high school is factored into this year's tax rate in any way, because we haven't even had authorization for that. So, that wouldn't happen until a year from now.
That's not what I was saying. I was saying, this fiscal year increases $101, okay? And if the debt exclusion comes on, it's another $164. So, you add that on, you're pushing 264, getting close to 300, okay?
But I just, once again, once again, that's not accurate. We're talking about two different years. The current fiscal year is what we're talking about. You've already paid two and a half of the taxes, based upon the two preliminary tax quarters that Mr. Moynihan has suggested. What we're saying is, should the Selectmen vote tonight for this tax classification formula, then the average residential tax bill for this year, compared to last year, will be about $100, $101 increase. It'll be about 2%. Very few communities around us have settled their tax rates. The only ones that have done so have been Chelmsford, which went up $200, and where Wilmington's average taxpayer pays, will pay $4,343, Chelmsford's average taxpayer, who has a less average value than we do, will pay 1,300 more than that. They'll pay $5,624. Tinsborough just went up $320, and will pay 4,800. Westford just went up $183, and will pay 6,900. Wilmington is going up $101, and will pay 4,343. The information that was just related to you about the $164 relates specifically to the school, and is not a part of this year's tax rate. So, I don't believe people ought to be misinformed or frightened, and I think that's what happens here. People get frightened. We've been consistent. This is the increase this year. Now, that increase, frankly, as Mr. Newhouse pointed out, for many people, will end up being the same amount of money on your third quarter tax as you've been paying on your first two taxes, because we've already factored that in. And I just hope that people would make an accurate presentation, because it's not fair to those that are not here and are not able to take a look at the figures themselves.
Okay, well, this is the documents that I gave you, right? I actually used myself, my tax bill, okay? It's actually for a vacant lot. And the vacant lot happens to be 20,000 square feet, okay? And if you have the paper that I gave you with the list of other taxpayers on it?
I do.
Matter of fact, I'll use Mr. Newhouse as an example. He actually has a house impediments on his lot, and his lot is actually almost 3,000 square feet larger than mine, but yet, his tax bill for his land portion value, okay, is like $27,000 less than mine.
Mr. McDonald.
Can I just ask?
I'll do this.
No, no, I'm good. I'm good. I am good.
This is fine.
Mr. McDonald, I was going to ask you a question.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, I was going to ask you a question. If you have an issue with your personal tax bill, if you think it's too high, you think it's too low, call Mr. Moynihan, set up an appointment, and go to his office. This is not the forum to discuss, but you're bringing up your own personal tax bill.
I'm using myself as an example.
And you're bringing up Mr. Newhouse.
And his is $27,000 less than mine, in valuation, okay? He's a Selectman, he's on a high school building committee.
Mr. Chairman, again, I think Mr. Moynihan should speak to that, because, again, it is, it's half information. It's not necessarily misinformation. It is comparing a vacant lot to a lot which is improved by a property, and therefore, the calculations are much different, and maybe Mr. Moynihan can speak to that. You need to compare it to the entire property that somebody owns, or you need to compare your vacant lot to somebody else's vacant lot. That's how it works. That's how it works.
Mr. McDonald, we're up here trying to answer your questions, and you're making faces again and laughing.
I'm not making faces.
Yes, you are, Mr. McDonald.
I'm not making faces.
So, Mr. Moynihan, if you'd like to speak on that.
Sure. I mean, when we come up, you know, I'm assuming that these values are correct.
I actually have all the tax bills that are on there.
Okay.
Okay? As a matter of fact, I have one tax bill that the lot is more than double the size, okay? And it's less in value. This one right here, okay? And she happens to be on the high school building committee, okay?
Mr. McDonald.
Really?
It just, really?
Really?
I'm trying to be real with you.
Yeah, okay.
You want to be real?
Okay.
Really?
Like I said, if you have an issue.
Do you like to see some of these?
No, I see what, if you might.
I mean, we've got $9.6 million in the bank, and he's trying to raise taxes.
Okay.
All right, I went to a finance committee.
Now, we're grandstanding, Mr. McDonald. If you have a question.
I don't need to stand. I just need a little bit of respect. I went to a finance committee meeting the other night, and I brought an article in from the American Association of Retirement People that stated that one in four Americans are struggling with poverty.
That's not true.
And the feedback I got back from Mr. Nally was, "That's because half of them are going to Foxwoods." Well, to be perfectly honest with you, I know people who are elderly that are struggling that have never been to Foxwoods, and they don't gamble a day in their life. So, I'd like to actually have this subject matter addressed tonight. Is the town a Sessa looking for a vote to increase taxes when we've got $9.6 million in the bank?
Okay. Mr. McDonald, please. You're not going to turn this into a grandstanding evening on this?
We're not, we're not.
Okay, relax. Mr. Newhouse, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to answer a question that, I think there was a legitimate question in the middle of all of that rant, and I think that question was, is the town's intent to raise taxes? Well, you know, I know what Mr. Moynihan's recommendation is tonight. Mr. Moynihan's recommendation is to accept a classification that shifts the tax burden to the CIP property tax, thereby relieving the residential taxpayer to the fullest extent permitted by law. The answer to that question is yes. That's exactly what we intend to do. Now, until, you, did you, do you want me to repeat what I just said? I'd be happy to repeat it.
Yes, please, Mr. Newhouse.
Okay. What the Board is going to vote to do this evening, Mr. McDonald, is to shift the tax burden, based on the law, which enables us to classify our taxes with the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers and the residential taxpayers. We are going to shift as much of the burden as the law permits on the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers. That's the vote that's being asked for the Board of Selectmen tonight. So, we are shifting as much of the burden as legally possible on the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers. If you're asking the question of what is the Board doing tonight, that's the answer to your question. On a related point, if you're asking if taxes are going to go up, the answer is yes. On average, taxes are going to go up from fiscal year 2012, from fiscal year 2011, by $100. I think that Mr. Lingefelder previously made a very salient point. Light bills are going up, fuel bills are going up, health insurance is going up, the cost of living is going up for everybody. And that also happens to be true for this $80 million enterprise that we call the town. It is absolutely true that the town continues to limit itself on an operating budget to the restraints of Prop. 2.5, and we have done that for as long as I've been involved in town government, for as long as Mr. McCoy's been involved in town government, and for as long as Mr. Kyra has been the town manager. Never has the town of Wilmington gone to the property taxpayers and asked them for an override to balance the budget. There's not too many towns that can say that. There's not too many towns that can say, "We're going to raise taxes, on average, $100 this year." Are we going to raise taxes? Yes, by about $100. I think it's pretty darn impressive that we're going to be able to do that when health insurance costs spiral, when we have collective bargaining obligations that we're trying to meet and will meet, when we're trying to continue to provide a quality education and plow the streets and do everything else that the town does. So, when you come in here, you can talk about my tax bill, I haven't even looked at my tax bill to the degree that you have. No, I look at my tax bill, but I also look what's going on down the street and around me. And when I'm paying, on average, $4,300 and some change for a tax bill, when many of the surrounding communities are paying $5,000, $6,000, $7,000, and paying for full-day kindergarten, and paying to ride the bus, and paying to play sports, and paying to plan the band or the symphony, and paying to have the trash picked up, I say, "I'll live with the $100 increase." I don't take it lightly. I don't trivialize how difficult some people have to work to make ends meet, but I'll take a $100 increase. So, that's, the best that I can answer your question, are we raising taxes? Yes, by $100 to the average payer.
Well, if you're being undertaxed, it would be a lot more for you, Mr. McDonald.
You can, you know.
Any other questions?
No, no, let me respond to that. Mr. McDonald, yeah, we'll get this off tonight. Dance around the issue again. Mr. McDonald, I dance around the issue.
Well, I came up with a serious, a serious issue.
Here's what I don't understand.
What don't you understand?
Here's what I don't understand. You can come to every public meeting, and you can take a tax classification discussion and use it for your political axe to grind. You can take a, you know, an $83 million project, and you can turn it into your own political axe to grind. Listen, I understand your blasting license got taken away. I understand you're angry at the fire department. I understand your barn got yanked on Treasure Hill Road. I understand you don't like the planning board.
In the middle of the winter time, and I was told not to pave it until I have.
I understand.
And then, in the middle of the winter, and all the plants are closed, they got taken.
I understand.
Mr. Newhouse?
I understand.
Mr. McDonald.
I understand. Is it my turn yet?
You know what?
I understand, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. McDonald, now you can call your name.
I understand. I understand that you can try and bully you.
You come here with your little button on, right?
Mr. McDonald. Mr. McDonald, that's the second time you've called him a name.
This is the, am I going to get the finish?
Hey, he's putting people asleep, all right?
No.
We've got a town Sessa here, all right? And we have a situation. As a matter of, I see you talking, Mr. Chairman.
Let me change direction.
You said it's actually under brown.
Mr. McDonald, Mr. McDonald.
We're trying to share, and I was not thinking of a way in.
Excuse me, Mr. McDonald. You're done talking on this subject. You've called people names, you're yelling over people, you're done. If you'd like to stick.
This guy is bringing misinformation to me, all right? Let me tell you something.
No, no, let me tell you something. If you want.
You're actually on the list, too.
Yeah, I see that.
You see your name on it?
I do.
Yeah. You happen to be, let's see, I would say at least $13,000 undervalued for a larger lot, Mr. Semaglia.
Mr. McDonald.
So, you want to deflect responsibility? Huh? You want to just talk?
I'm going to tell you one more time, okay? You're done talking on this issue. You're done.
Hey.
Is there any other public comment?
You have a chance to respond.
Your questions have been answered.
Yeah, they have.
Yes, they have.
Mr. McDonald, you can barge through the administration.
You're a joke. I have zero respect for you.
Okay, that's it.
Can I just say something?
Mr. Chairman. I would like you to escort, now he's disrupting a public meeting. I think he should be escorted out of here. Mr. McDonald, have a nice night.
I don't need an escort. You guys are a joke.
Have a nice night. That's very good. Thank you very much.
And you know what? The voters are going to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald. Have a good night.
So, I'll, I'll reduce.
Kevin, I want to just say something to clarify something.
Will you be doing that, huh? Huh? Will you be dancing with Mr. Newhouse?
Are you all right? Yeah. Mr. McDonald, I have a question for you. I have a question for you, Mr. McDonald.
You know what? I don't have any answers for you, Mr. McDonald. I'm throwing it off, Mr. Newhouse. Mr. Harvick, I believe my two-house.
Have a good night, Mr. McDonald.
Can I say something, Mr. Chairman? I was hoping to say something while we was here, but obviously, you did the right thing.
I live at Treasure Hill Road and what Mr. Newhouse said was accurate, was 100% accurate. As a resident of this town, I live on Treasure Hill Road and we worked with the planning board. We've worked with Mr. McDonald time and time again. The planning board had no choice upon the request of our neighborhood to take the barn because he did not finish the street. And I'll tell you, if you go down there today, some areas of Treasure Hill Road, 18 years later, looks like downtown Baghdad. Still does, okay? But it was the planning board, and I've had different opinions with planning boards from time to time, but they did the right thing. And we've worked with Mr. McDonald, the residents. We said, "When are you going to finish the street, Kevin?" So he's full of it when he says that, "Oh, it was the middle of winter." We worked with him for about two, three years. "When are you going to finish the street?" Everybody up there, including myself, had young children. There was about eight or nine young kids that lived up in that cul-de-sac. It was dangerous. The planning board, in its good wisdom, did the right thing upon the request of the residents to take that barn. So Mr. Newhouse is absolutely accurate and he's dancing around the issue, Mr. McDonald. And I wanted to say it while I was here, but you did the right thing by letting him go. People need to know that. You know, the residents worked with him because we want to be a good neighbor. And we took our time, couple, two to three years. Enough's enough. I encourage anybody to go down Treasure Hill Road where I live and you're going to see that area, especially on the right-hand side where he owns that property. It looks horrible and he owns four lots up there. It looks, and I'll say it, it looks horrible up there and I lived there. But at least my area and the other areas, everyone has done what we can and the town did a great job by taking the barn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Newhouse, you're absolutely correct.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have one observation. You know, certain individuals can take volunteers and paid employees alike and they can play gotcha and they can, you know, pull out paperwork and throw this innuendo out there as if something's going on as soon as a direct question is asked about that person. You know, they can jump online and they can stalk you electronically and go back and find your business associations back to the mid-'90s. But as soon as you ask a direct question about that individual and that individual's track record couldn't even talk, had to... I tried for five minutes just to make a point. Couldn't even talk because it's okay to try and embarrass people. It's okay to stalk them electronically. It's okay to glare at them and to berate town employee and go up even as he's being asked to leave. That's okay, but once the conversation turns to the facts about that individual's track record in town, now free speech doesn't matter. Now I'm not allowed to speak. So I just want to make the observation that there seem to be a couple of different sets of rules depending on who the individual is.
Facts speak louder than fiction.
I agree with both of you. Any more comments on...
A brief comment and then I wanted to maybe ask a question. I guess I want to say to people in this room and anyone that maybe is watching, if they think that's free speech, then we're all messed up. There were criticisms at one of the public forums, some, I guess probably a month or two months ago, where the speaker was asked to leave again and there was much debate or discussion after that meeting that it was done too hastily, that his free speech was being taken away from him. You can see exactly that that is not what free speech is about. It's not coming in and kicking over tables and making a fool of yourself, casting innuendos or making accusations of conspiracy. It's ludicrous. It's unfair. Ms. O'Connor talked about the rules of engagement in a previous meeting. It's... I'm getting increasingly angry that we spend a half an hour of every one of our selectmen meetings talking about one individual and his asinine accusations. I'm frustrated by it. I wish there was some statutes that we could exercise that would make it impossible for him to go down this road. I understand unfortunately there isn't, but I just want people to see. I hope that this charade tonight, that what we witness tonight will be a testament to everyone that watches this. So as he goes out bullying his message on whatever political issue that he's on, that it will illustrate that he doesn't have a leg to stand on, that in fact, how could anyone align themselves with him? He doesn't represent his cause at all very well. If someone's opposed to something that I'm in favor of, I respect their opinion. I respect a good spirited debate and discussion that's done with respect. But as soon as someone starts acting like that, frankly, I start questioning in my mind, boy, why would anyone want to align with that side of the argument? So think about your position on this and think about who your ally is. Unfortunately, he did raise an issue that I think, now because it's out there, people might be thinking, "Yeah, well, we do have," I forget what the number is, "nine something million in free cash." I wish we could come up with another term for this account because nothing's free. But I understand the rationale behind having a rainy day account, behind having a savings account. It's much like we do at home, the way I do in my home. I have to pay my bills every month and I pay, I go mean and lean every month and we make just enough to make the bills. But there's also a savings account and it's there just in case I need it. And it's there to help my credit and my ratings and for me to be able to borrow if I need to. So to some degree, I think the innuendo was made, well, if we have any money in the bank, we ought to clean the bank account out before we start taxing the residents again. And perhaps we can, someone, either you, Skip, or Mike Kyra can sort of explain a little bit as to why we still do have tax increases when we do have money in our bank account. Did I already explain it?
I think you probably did. I mean, I think Skip has explained the taxing capacity and that we want to make sure that we have sufficient funds for our regular operations. I would point out that several years ago, we also reached in excess of $9 million in free cash. And over a period of several years when there was a very sluggish economy, we dipped into the free cash such that we went down to under $4 million in free cash. And we did that because we did not want to retreat on services. We did not want to cut services. People, you know, wanted to be able to continue to have a level of services that they had been accustomed to. Had we not had that free cash, we wouldn't have been able to weather that storm. And I said it before during those years and didn't mean to trivialize it, but I said it was for a rainy day and it was raining out. It was raining hard. And we were able to have a fiscal umbrella, so to speak, in order to carry us through those times. I think that's what this is again. I think we've been able to build up a savings account that is going to enable us to make sure that we can pay down debt from major projects such as the school if we have to get into a difficult time. It's going to allow us to acquire property, which the Board of Selectmen has been looking at in order to increase our inventory of open space and recreation programs. It's going to allow us to maintain our inventory of public safety vehicles and also enable us to maintain our buildings and grounds. So I think it's important to be able to do that. Now, I think that the other point that was made was that while we're doing this, while we've been able to build up this operational reserve to help us in an extraordinary circumstance should something come up, we're not, you know, overtaxing people in terms of Proposition 2.5 overrides. We're not going, as many other communities have had to, after having laid off teachers and police officers and firefighters, still ask for more money. Not only are we not laying people off and we're not cutting back on services, we're not asking for additional taxing capacity. We're not, as Mr. Newhouse said, asking people to pay for services that I believe they're entitled through their taxes. You know, so that kids can play sports in school without being burdened by activity fees. They can join the band. They can go to and enjoy all-day kindergarten without having to pay $4,000 or $4,500 or $5,000, which is what neighboring communities charge for kids to go to kindergarten. That's a tax. That fee is a tax. We don't do that. And so I think it's important to have that operational cushion. I think it also, as you pointed out, Mr. Shampoo, helps in terms of getting a better rate on our, when we go out for borrowing. And I think it makes for a better community.
Great. All set.
I think all the key points have been stated. I mean, the bottom line is the cost of living is what it is and it continues to go up. Certainly from a professional standpoint, I'm involved in real estate transactions every day in varying communities within Massachusetts. And I can tell you that, you know, everything that's been said about Wilmington being one of the most affordable suburbs is absolutely true. It's proven daily. People are lined up to come into the town of Wilmington. And I think that, you know, you have a certain budget, you have competing needs. You know, raising taxes and asking people to pay more money is a difficult situation. It certainly isn't a perfect world, but I think that respectfully, that I believe personally from a resident before I ever came onto this board, that I think that Wilmington has always taken a very conservative approach. They certainly do their due diligence in making sure that it's a very affordable community. And, you know, certainly there will be people that will have their opinions and their comments, but the facts stand for themselves. These chats don't, you know, don't have any opinion. It's hardcore black and white facts and the bottom line is that the average tax increase is going to be $100. When you look at it, even what it was last year, $11.88. If you go over any border on any side that's neighboring to Wilmington, they're paying more money and they are not in a situation, they do not have a new ambulance, they do not have a new ladder truck, they don't have the Fourth of July celebrations, they don't have full-day kindergarten, even from my previous experience on the school committee. What our children pay to eat lunch every day, you know, is considerably less. You could go into every single category and have a very intelligent, empirical-based, fact-based discussion that proves up and down the line that there is serious investigation and due diligence from a financial perspective. And at the end of the day, we all have a choice of where we choose to live. And I still would choose living in Wilmington any day. I have never been in another community that I could say to myself that I wished I lived there rather than live in the town of Wilmington. And that's how I make my personal decision, as we all do. So that's really what I want to say.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the audience? Questions, comments, or motion? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It was a late race. Dick Hayden, I'm on the Finance Committee. I live on Olive Avenue. And one point that I'd like to make is that when we receive the town budgets during the budget session, we don't have to sit down and cut, slash, and burn because it's already been done that way before we brought to us. And one of the good parts about going through those budgets is many times the most important part is listening to the services that these departments provide, the kind of extra things they do for the elders, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You've already named up a lot of the issues in the schools. These are things that other towns don't have that we have here. So again, I just throw that back into the pot because we look at everything. We look to see where we can make reductions and there aren't a lot of them.
Thank you. One quick point, too. It's not all about the schools and the children, the people that have children. Seniors that drive, they have to have their streets plowed. Surrounding communities pay hundreds of dollars a year to have their trash picked up. So it's not just, you know, individual schools or different fees for sports in schools. It's for everybody and it is what it is. And just a quick note, I was going to save this till the end, but I'm proud and honored to say that I'm the chairman of this board. I think this board has worked extremely well together over the past almost five years that I've been on it. And I apologized, I will apologize for the past six months or so that one gentleman has made us, made this board, these meetings, kind of like a charade. And it's been called that before and it's not right. We're here to do town's business. Obviously, there's rules, there's laws that every department has to follow in a town, a city in town, as well as we do here. And I just, you know, having to remove somebody every meeting because he wants to make it a show is just not right. And we're here to do town's business. And I deal with people every day in my capacity, a director of veteran services, that know what freedom of speech is. And they come home from a year's tour in Iraq or Afghanistan or for their second or third tour. They know what freedom of speech is. So thank you. And any other questions, comments, or emotion?
Mr. Shampoo, I would recommend that if the board is so inclined that they move to adopt a classification shift of 1.75 as recommended by the Board of Assessors, which results in the minimum residential factor of .742013 for fiscal year 2012.
Make motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the Board Assessor's classification as described by the town manager's numbers that he just read a second ago.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moynihan. And now our 7:40 appointment, and that would close the public meeting. I'm sorry, on the classification. Thank you. Okay, our 7:40 appointment is with the Board of Selectmen discussion and assignment of motions for special town meeting.
Mr. Shampoo, you have the warrant for the special town meeting. And this is really just to assign the motions. I think we've been through this. But on a number of different occasions, the first article is the article for the, to appropriate funds by borrowing for the construction of the new school. And that is a motion that will be offered by a member of the Board of Selectmen. Again, it is... The motion would be to appropriate the entire project cost, in this case, which is $81,563,115. And included in the motion would be according to the effect that that amount of money would be reduced by the 55.19% of eligible cost that will inure to the town from the MSBA. So that the final amount that the town anticipates borrowing would be $44,190,000.
Can I just make a recommendation that we have Selectman Newhouse read that article because he is on that committee?
Sure.
You can go with that.
That's fine. The second article is to see if the town will vote to purchase the quarter-acre lot that is adjacent to the town's high school and that is owned by the First Baptist Church. We would include in the motion the agreed-upon price that the Board of Selectmen agreed upon with the First Baptist Church. And it's memorialized by a contingent purchase and sale of $15,000. That $15,000 would come from available funds to the general fund. And we would need someone... Will you be making that motion?
Sure.
And then the other two articles, Article 3 and 4, again, was the authorization that the town would pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 58 of the Mass General Laws authorize that the town could impose and record a lien against private real property from municipal charges that arise from cutting trees or removal of trees that were determined to be a danger to public safety and wherein the responsible party did not take the action that had been requested. That would be Article 3.
Start down either end.
Want to go by seniority?
Sure.
And then Article 4 is similar in that it would essentially codify by bylaw the action that the board would be taking in Article 3. And then...
Mr. Shampoo.
There are two other articles, but they're not articles from the town. They're petitioned articles. One is to purchase town property and the Property Review Board will be meeting again tomorrow to provide me with a recommendation of property that's on Boutwell Street. And Article 6 is a petitioned article of Mr. McDonald to see whether the town will vote to preserve the high school and prevent it from being demolished. The town meeting again is December 10th at 10:30 at the high school gymnasium on Saturday, December 10th. And prior to that, of course, is the special election on the referendum, the one question relative to the debt exclusion vote, which is December 6th. Polls open 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Mr. Shampoo, I'm sorry. Yes, you have correspondence from Margaret Hurley, the Assistant Attorney General, that was sent to Sharon George, the town clerk, regarding the town meeting Article 22, which was curfew in public parks, playgrounds, and fields. The Attorney General reviewed the article but struck certain sections in the article. They essentially disapproved the arrest portion of the bylaw. They indicated that the arrest portion of the bylaw should be stricken. Town council believes that we should challenge that determination. He does so by essentially suggesting that we write to the Assistant Attorney General, and he has done so on behalf of the town, asking that she reconsider the disapproval and approve the language of the bylaw because there is in fact a statute authorizing a warrantless arrest of one who enters or remains upon the improved or enclosed land of another after being forbidden to do so by the owner. And council cites the General Law, Chapter 266, Section 120, which calls that a person who is found committing a trespass may be arrested by a sheriff, deputy sheriff, constable, or police officer and kept in custody in a... sheriff, constable, or police officer, and kept in custody in a convenient place. In other words, what this bylaw would do is if somebody were not going to leave a public place when that public place was closed, and they insisted on not leaving, the Attorney General is opining at this point that we could not make an arrest on that basis. Town Council is citing statute and also law. He's indicated that it's been held, the statute applies both to a private park and to government property, and believes that there's clear statutory authority for a warrantless arrest of one who enters or remains upon the improved or enclosed land of another after being forbidden to do so by an owner. So the only part that they struck was the, really the enforcement part of the bylaw, and Town Council has already made an effort to contact the Attorney General's office asking for reconsideration. The board has a letter from Catherine Craven, the Executive Director of the School Building Authority, regarding approval of the proposed project to replace the existing Wilmington High School. This was a letter that was sent to Superintendent Benton to report the board's favorable vote, and that they approved the maximum grant of $37,993,245 for the project. That's the dollar amount that the town will receive from the state through the MSBA for this project. They also point out that pursuant to MSBA's regulation, the district has 120 days to acquire and certify local approval for the appropriation and to get all other necessary votes pertaining to the project. And obviously, we will be taking that action well within the 120 days. The board has a correspondence from Gina Daly, the Director of Comprehensive Permit Programs for the Mass Housing Finance Agency, relative to their final report on their analysis of Regency Place and its cost examination. You had received a draft report, which they asked us to comment on, and we did make a response that we had no objection to the draft report on the cost examination, and they have issued a final report. The board has a letter from Jane Lyman of Comcast Xfinity advising the town that they've created websites that contain upcoming programming contract expirations. And again, they're indicating to us that the webpage is available, and they've provided this information to all of the subscribers to Comcast. The town clerk is requesting that the board consider appointing Robert Beals of Three Wicks Circle as an election worker, and would request that the board take that action this evening so Mr. Beals could be utilized if necessary at the two upcoming events, the election and the town meeting.
Any questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to appoint Mr. Beals as an election worker.
Second? Motion made second. All in favor? unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business here for the board.
Thank you. Public comments?
Not tonight.
New business committee reports. Just quickly, Mr. Chairman, I think you've done a great job chairing these meetings under the circumstances, and I don't think we need to beat the drum anymore.
Thank you. If I'd have realized that there was such a Yale fan in the room earlier, I probably would have laid back. I'm sorry.
Any new business committee reports?
Nothing here.
I'd just like to encourage, I think we're not meeting again as a Board of Selectmen until after a couple of big events, including our town election and our town special town meeting. So I just want to encourage all residents, regardless of what your position is, to engage. Take your, have your voice heard at the polls and at the town meeting. Come out and be a participant in the process. That's really all I wanted to say on that. Yeah, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what date?
Mr. Chairman, we will be continuing to collect at Curbside Yard Waste through December 2nd. December 2nd is the last day. However, you can still utilize the Old Main Street Recycling Center to drop off brush on either November 30th or December 3rd, as well as December 7th and December 10th. Would remind everyone that the Ole and Public Information Meeting is Wednesday, November 30th, begins at 7:00 p.m. It is held at the Middle School Auditorium. On December 1st, parents and guardians are encouraged to bring their youngsters to the town hall for Santa's workshop. That is held from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you need information about that event, feel free to contact the Recreation Department. Also, on December 3rd is Breakfast with Santa. Those tickets usually go pretty quickly. There are two seedings for breakfast again. If you've not gotten your ticket, you may want to call the Recreation Department. They're usually a sellout, so I would not recommend you showing up at either of those seedings on that particular day. But if you're interested, you should contact the Recreation Department as soon as possible. Christmas tree lighting on the town common is also Saturday, December 3rd. Free hay rides, or sleigh rides, I guess is probably more appropriate, begin at 4:30. The ceremonies begin at 5:30. The tree lighting itself is at 6 o'clock. This is a wonderful event that's sponsored by the Fourth of July Committee, and there are a number of organizations that get involved, the churches, the Chamber of Commerce, and others. So you're encouraged to attend. The Community Fund is another group that participates. On December 4th, the Hundred and Tavern has a holiday social from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. if you're interested. As Mr. Selectman Shampoo just mentioned, the special town election is on Tuesday, December 6th. The polls open 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. All of the regular polling locations. December 10th is the special town meeting, held at the High School Gymnasium at 10:30 a.m. It's a six-artikel warrant. And the board next meets on December 12th.
Thank you. Motion, John?
Second?
Motion made second. All in favor?
unanimous.
Thank you.